Welcome, everyone, to the January 11th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home, and welcome especially to you, Pat.
Thank you.
Yep, glad to have you here.
Welcome.
It's 1111.
It is.
It's 110111, yeah.
So, Peter Geek language. The first item is items and committee reports, and this is going to be our first effort to, I think we'll do one quick round of just kind of, and quick, on more random things, and then we'll come back and do specific committees. This is that effort to give more time. There's an hour allocated here. The Human Rights Commission, is that what that, yep, and Human Rights Commission, Travel Lane County, or I think George said he might substitute the MX Steering Committee, Human Services Commission, ElCog, I don't know if we're going to hear about ElCog tonight because Chris isn't here, MBC is Allen, we have a written report on PSCC, Public Safety Coordinating Committee, here, and then the Sustainability Commission, if we have time, might do La Rappa.
I've got lots to meet.
Okay, so I'll just start out by saying that I, in the afternoon, went to Captain Chuck Tilby's retirement party.
Oh.
And I think everybody, every-
Who went invited?
Well, I guess not.
Guess not. I would've gone with that.
I don't, anyway, it was a very nice occasion, and all of his hard work was recognized, and I think we just want to recognize around the table, I believe they said 33 years of service to our, to our community, and almost all of us are very familiar with Captain Tilby, so we just want to say on behalf of the council, a big thank you to him for his service to our community. On Thursday, we have the Matthew Knight Arena opening going to be occurring, that'll be a big deal. On Friday, we have the MX Dedication, another big deal, going out to Riverbend and Gateway. And then on Monday, it's Martin Luther King Day, so offices will be closed here, but there will be a march from the Mashawski Center to the Halt at 9:00. Then another evening event at 6:00 at the Halt. And then I will just wrap up my comments by saying, "Thank you, Ducks." Thank you for that incredible thing to be in the national championship, and for us to have that opportunity and ride that ride, so, and to remind everybody that we're going to be looking forward to having a parade to celebrate them and other champions of our community on the 22nd of this month, 10:00 in the morning, from campus to downtown. As I understand it, we will have Chip Kelly and the team, and cheerleaders, and bands, and school bands, and also opportunity to celebrate debate teams, championship on the rocks, contest at the national level. I think that we had a gospel choir that was noted nationally, too, so we have a lot of things that we will be celebrating, and I'm hoping that everybody will be able to participate. And I don't know what that participation for us means yet, but I'll let you know as soon as, as I get the word on it. But I hope you'll put it on your calendar, and expecting, as they said in the paper, win or lose, rain or shine, 20,000 people to show up, so you may want to be amongst them for your town. Betty? We're just doing a quick round first, and then-
Starting with me this time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what to do if I'm first, but I attended the State of the County and the State of the City, both interesting. Kitty did a good job at State of the City. I want to congratulate Kitty on her recognition by the Nation Magazine as the most progressive mayor in the country. I was appointed by the new president of National League of Cities as Chair of the Human Development Policy and Advocacy Committee, which is a pretty big deal. We deal with things like workforce development, and forming policy, and human rights, civil rights, immigration, which is still a big topic, and education, healthcare, and so I am getting lots of complaints about parking fines. I don't, well, everybody got the one letter, I know, but apparently they've changed the hours of operation, the hours of giving tickets, so that people are getting surprised by them. I still, of course, think we should have free parking of all of downtown. Workforce Executive, the Workforce Board has, Mike and I agree on everything, the Workforce Partnership has moved to their new quarters after John evicted them. And they are very happy in their new surroundings.
Thanks.
Where are they?
Allen?
Out by Marie Callender's.
And I should say that Chris Pryor is out of town, and so he's not here this evening. Go ahead.
I, too, was at the State of the City, and that went off very well. Nice job, Mike, nice job, Mayor, on your, on the talk, and I wanted to recognize both the Mayor's and Councillor Taylor's national recognition. The two of the three national recognitions we got, the other one was our football team going to the National Championship, which I had the privilege of getting to go to last week, it was kind of a really special event, really put Eugene on the map, and it was a very special thing to get to attend, especially since our young men did such an admirable job, and they're winners in my mind. It was a pretty evenly matched game, so. And then at the pep rally beforehand, they actually had 20,000 Duck fans at this thing. People were, who knew about these things, said they don't even come close to getting that at Super Bowls, so it was kind of a really neat thing to see how people came around, the University of Oregon and Eugene in particular.
And the Ellen DeGeneres Show, and the Jimmy Fallon Show.
Yeah, Jimmy Fallon, and that guy actually did his thing at the pep rally, and they had Otis Day in the nights from Animal House.
That's the one that made me jealous, like, "Otis Day!"
Yeah, he was, that was great. Yeah, it really was some kind of good party.
Well, I'm, um, thank you, I'm done. Thank you. I'm also very proud of our Ducks, I think they did a fabulous job, and I'm looking forward to the parade, and hope that we can get University District Hospital to do an entry. I hope I can talk a little bit about La Rappa, so I won't share with that. I did go to a Trainsong Neighborhood Meeting on Thursday night instead of going to the Santa Clara meeting, and tomorrow night at Whittaker, they're actually going to be talking about the BRT and how it, what it means to them. You're welcome to attend. I just want to make a couple of comments about an email that John sent out about a community member regarding treatment of staff, and I just want to stand, I just want to make sure that I support John in this decision, I just want to make this statement, because I feel like our city staffers work really hard for us, and that, I don't know where people feel like they can be, talk verbally abusive to each other. I think we've really tried to set a better example here at the council table, and I really appreciate the Mayor's leadership on that, and I would hope that the community follows suit when it comes to dealing with staff. I'm sorry I didn't, wasn't aware of Chuck Tilby's retirement, he's an awesome person, I know he'll be surely missed, and I just want to comment on the Police Department received 20 commendations in the month of December. I'll just read one of them. "The reporting party commented that several officers were there morale and physical support. In my struggles to stay alive and well, or stay well and thrive, the reporting party wishes to thank an officer for his courteous help when her car died at a busy intersection, which can be very stressful for people. He pushed her car out of the way, called a tow truck, and stayed with her until the tow company advised her of their estimated time of arrival." And I think that just speaks to what our police are doing for us in the community.
Thank you. George?
I attended the State of the City and the State of the County, and had various meetings with constituents, went to a couple of meetings with an ad hoc group of people concerned about, people from 4J and from Bethel who are really concerned about the funding situation there, and, you know, discussing strategies and things that may, might be able to do to keep that situation from deteriorating farther. Went to the public hearing on the same issue. It was pretty well-attended, it was packed over there, standing room only, so there's a lot of concern in the community, and we'll be talking about that later tonight, so that's all I'll say for now. I went to my new orientation for, my new committee assignment, Metro Wastewater Management, so that's going to be real good. They meet on Friday morning at 7:30, unfortunately, that'll be a little tough.
You can do it, George.
Get over to Springfield early in the morning, and then McKenzie Watershed Council this Thursday evening, so I'm really looking forward to both of those things. And I wasn't going to say anything, but since Councillor Ties brought it up, managers' email regarding its citizens' criticisms of staff, if, if in fact, it approached like criminal status, which is almost sounded like severe harassment and browbeating and perhaps physical threatening, that's one thing. I mean, if anyone does that, intimidates staff, that, they should be, you know, they should be arrested and tried and prosecuted, and have found guilty, thrown in jail, but if it's just criticism, even if it's annoying and persistent, I don't know, I think, I, maybe we just don't, maybe we just need to know a little bit more about it, I guess, but I don't know, I, I don't see a problem with, with just criticism, even though it can be annoying, it won't stop. As long as it's not criminal, I don't see a problem. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you, and thank you for the welcome, Mayor Piercy.
Excuse me?
A couple of things very quickly. Active Bethel Citizens, ABC, which is from West Eugene, covers the largest area of any neighborhood group. We applied for a SNAP grant for the upcoming SNAP season, shall we say, and pleased to announce that we did receive the SNAP grant, which will be for community gardens in the Bethel area, growing organic produce on, hopefully, and most likely, in conjunction with the school district, on school district property, providing, providing community access to growing organic food, and, and greater access to, to a sustainable food source. Looking forward to that, that will begin sometime in June, as far as the grant is concerned, but the work will begin with groundbreaking as early as perhaps next week, so very excited about that. And secondly, on another note, above my Eugene pin here is a very small unit insignia. It's the Second Battalion of the 162nd Infantry, which is a, at the time when I was, I was a member of the Second Battalion, when I received my commission in 1978, I was posted to Bravo Company of the Second Battalion of the 162nd Infantry, I was a platoon leader. Our executive officer at the time was a man called Tom Egan. Tom and I served together in the National Guard for a number of years, and thinking about Tom last week, when I heard that our unit, the Bravo Company of the Second Battalion of the 162nd Infantry, received a Presidential Unit Citation for bravery in Iraq, so the men and women of the 162nd Bravo Company, congratulations, and God bless you all, and they're home safely now, and as we all do, I pray and hope for the return of our men and women who are overseas in harm's way today. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, Pat, again. It's also my understanding that that's the first Presidential Unit Citation to go to a reserve unit since World War II, I think since Normandy, so special thank you and congratulations. Real quick, the Harlow Neighborhood Association is meeting on the 13th, they've changed their time and location, it's now at 6:00 at the North Park Community Church at 3484 Harlow Road, trying a different venue, see if we can get a little bit better turnout. And then on the 20th, the following week, at 7:00 at the Sheldon Community Center, the Cal Young Neighborhood Association is going to have a meeting, and I believe they're going to discuss possible reorganization. In fact, there's been some 30,000-foot discussions about looking at both Harlow and Cal Young, and maybe commingling and then dividing up, and the problem is, and primarily in Cal Young, it's such a big geographical area, and there's so many people that it's hard to, you know, you think it would be easy to get volunteers, but it's really getting kind of difficult to find somebody to step up and take over the leadership of that, so two very important meetings. And then sometime during our busy schedules, I hope we all take a moment out to pay our respects to the six victims in Arizona, and for their families, and for the ones that were wounded also. And the thing that concerns me is, you know, some of the rhetoric that was spouted on this person's, the suspect's postings and things, is real similar to what some of the comments I've been hearing in the, in our community from people, and that kind of worries me, and, you know, the, the big thing now back in Washington is, is all the elected officials are just saying, you know, maybe it's time to tune it down a little bit, and, you know, there is a way to get your point across, across without being vicious and vindictive and nasty. It's okay to disagree, I have no problems with that, but, you know, maybe it is time that we all kind of step back and took a look at the way we, you know, look at the way government is run, and, you know, if you're not, if you're not part of the solution-
Or solution, then you must be part of the problem.
You're part of the problem, so, somebody asked me once, well, you know, actually it was one of my relatives, you know, was complaining about government this and government that, and I told, you know, we told him, we said, "Look, you know, in our own little world, we're stepping out and trying to make things, you know, right, and make it a better place, so rather than just, you know, complaining and whining about it, you know, there is a way to work with the system to help improve things, so let's just hope that the people in our community kind of take that into consideration when they start, start their ranting and ravings."
Hi.
Thank you. I, too, want to welcome Councillor Farr to the table.
Thank you.
And tonight, we'll be electing new council officers in the next meeting, and I just want to say it's been a privilege and an honor to serve as council president this last year, and I appreciated that chance very much. I, too, wish I'd had the chance to, to thank Captain Tilby for his years of service, as a, as a very dedicated member of our Police Department, and, and we congratulate him on the chance to enter retirement now. I also want to congratulate the Ducks, I know that, that tonight, last night's outcome wasn't what they'd hoped for, but I must say that I've never been prouder to be a Duck. They conducted themselves in a way that I think all of us can be proud, and I, I just was, it was a wonderful thing to watch. I, too, had the chance to attend the State of the City and the State of the County, that was a very nice occasion. Santa Clara Community Organization had their meeting on the 6th, and I wanted to make sure that everybody at this table, after our last conversation, knew how grateful that the members, both of the Santa Clara Community Organization and the River Road Community folks that were there, were for us granting them the variance so that they could apply for the SNAPs grant that they did in fact get, and so they will be working on now, what is, what is the plan for transitioning that area, what's the refinement work that's necessary after in visiting Eugene, what sort of work will be done in their area, and they're, they're very appreciative for the staff help to help them go through all of that work, and I think it'll benefit our whole community. Wanted to mention that the Springfield State of the City address is on the 13th at 11:00 AM, I do plan to attend. As George mentioned, the Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting on the 20th at 7:00 PM at Sheldon Community Center. There's been talk for a number of years in the Cal Young Neighborhood Association, because it is so large, is over two and a half times the size of the highest recommended number of, of residents for a neighborhood association, that it be split up. I think that's going to take place, and I guess I would invite anyone watching the broadcast who is, lives within the Cal Young Neighborhood area to contact George or I, or Neighborhood Services, if you have an interest in leading a neighborhood association that may be quite a bit closer to where your house is. We're going to try and see if it can't be organized in a way where there are smaller associations that are more impactful around people's general neighborhood, so if you have an interest in that, please contact us. And then lastly, I suppose I would say that I'm looking forward to the Chamber of Commerce's Celebration of Business, which will be on the Wednesday evening, the 26th, where we will also congratulate, as I understand it, Rob Bennett, as Eugene's first citizen.
And pillar of the pit.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, just very briefly. Cranes continue to appear downtown, construction cranes, and that's very exciting. With respect to parking, the, it has always been till 6:00 that it's enforced, and so we haven't changed that, and so it's, we're at the same hours enforcing. It's going to be a very busy next three or four months for the council, and so I've just encouraged you, if, if there's information that you're not receiving individually, or there's something else you'd like, please let me know or let us know, so we can make sure we get you information that you need in order to make decisions that are coming up over the next several months, please do that. And then, also, I would just say, congratulations to Chuck Tilby, just a wonderful person, done a great service to this community, and we also happen to be alumni of Colorado State University together, along with Sarah Maderi, so it's sort of a triad there, so.
Hmm.
But very much a proud supporter of the University of Oregon Ducks.
All right.
Nice save.
So now we're going to turn to committee reports, and the first one is the Human Rights Commission, and I know George has been, Brown has been serving on that, and is no longer, but, and then, Pat, you're going to be the new person on the Human Rights Commission, right?
Yes.
Yep. Want to say anything, George?
Yeah, I've got, I just, you know, I kind of got that form that, that we got to guide us through this, and I knew some of these things, and Holly reminded me of some of those things that I didn't put down, so kind of a collaborative effort. Some of the recent things, the last few months, that the Human Rights Commission has worked on, they worked with the Gender Center on Transgender Awareness Week and Day of Remembrance, they sent a letter to us on the Immigration Reform and Arizona Senate Bill 1070. They, the Accessibility Committee hosted a community forum on veterans, 80 people attended that, that was just a month ago. They sent a letter of support to the UN on the Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, in support of local Oregon tribes. They provided financial support to Pride Day, Calc Cornucopia, Trans Awareness Week, and the upcoming MLK Martin Luther King Event. They're giving them some money, so they can put that on. Five commissioners attended a Neighborhood Summit Planning Event that a lot of people in this room were at, and five commissioners attended Best Practices Training for boards and commissioners, that's about a third of the commission went. And also, I already talked about this a couple, few meetings ago, but on December 10th was International Human Rights Day, and there was a big to-do over at the Baker Center, and Councillor Ties was there, and the Mayor and Manager, presenting awards to city people who've done outstanding work on human rights. It was also the 20th anniversary of the Eugene Human Rights Commission, happened to coincide. Upcoming actions, they're going to ask us to read and give feedback, and then hopefully eventually approve a resolution to reaffirm the city's pledge to adhere to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and use, use human rights as a network, framework, principles to guide the city's efforts to protect the human rights of everyone in town, and, so they're going to expect, will like us to endorse a pretty strong statement there, though, coming up in a month or two, I think. Along with this, next month, on February 15th, there's a three-hour Human Rights Framework Training, I'm not exactly sure where it's going to be, but, and the Human Rights Commission is hoping that some of the councillors will turn out for that, and I'm going to try to go as long as it doesn't conflict with any of our other stuff that we all have going The five or six commissioners are looking at the Former Human Rights Support System Program, seeing if they can revive that and make that relevant, they're working on recommendations for the commission to use that body, perhaps revive it, and use it as a, as a response tool for incidents of discrimination and harassment, and anti-violation of civil or human rights. And finally, we've got a couple of vacancies on the Human Rights Commission, will need to be filled at, you know, the next cycle, recruitment cycle, so, two or three, two that I know of for sure, and I think there's a third, so I think that's basically it.
Had you want to say something?
Just briefly, on the Human Rights Commission, I requested assignment to the Human Rights Commission, and thank you, Mayor Piercy, for granting that, and I spent part of the day today with the staff from Human Rights Commission, and I'm looking forward to that, to the challenge and to the opportunity, and also want to have you, ask you to put a date on your calendar of March 17, which is this year's Homeless Connect, which the Human Rights Commission and the Human Rights Staff is involved with once again, and thank you for, to the City Manager for-
What's the date again, Pat?
It's March 17, so it'll be at the fairgrounds, on St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, yeah. Is that yours?
Thank you, Mayor.
Question? So, I just have a comment and a question, so, or a ask. So, with the last Public Safety Zone ordinance that we did, we had embedded in it some sort of an advocacy piece for anybody who needed help during the system, if they had been excluded, for whatever reason, from downtown, and I'm hoping that maybe, you know, if you review a little bit, Pat, you know, from what, what our decision was, that, you know, the human rights would play a part in this, you know, along with maybe, you know, somebody from the Police Commission so that they understand the legality around it. I think it'd be a natural fit, you know, for those two organizations to work together, because I really would hate, I mean, if there's people who want to do advocacy and are willing to be trained, and whatever the training would look like would be up to the Police Department, as opposed to putting dollars out, I think, you know, there is a willingness for people to volunteer for that. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on, and I talked to the Mayor about this, but I don't know if I took it any further, you know, whenever we appoint people to a board and commission within our organization, we do a pretty good job with the Standing Committees, but when we appoint people to other organizations, and I'll use La Rappa for an example, you know, we send them on, you know, go forth and do good work, and what does that look like? You know, what is really their responsibility and their charge, being a representative of the City of Eugene, towards that body, so I would really hope that somehow we can learn, as we go through time, that, you know, since everything's now going to be on the same calendar, that we move everything to try and, and kind of make it more lean for the appointment process, that we actually embed a, some kind of a training there, that we make available, and actually mandatory, you know, to everybody who serves in a representative position for the City of Eugene, because a lot of the stuff, most people are pretty savvy by the time they get appointed, appointed to a board and committee, but that's not a given, and I think there's a lot of questions that people ask that they don't realize is in their charge, and I think it would save a lot of angst on some of the other outlying appointments that we have, because personally, you know, what I've witnessed is people don't understand that, you know, what their role is, and they're there for advocacy, and yet, okay, well, what does that really mean, and what does that look like, and how, you know, how does that part play into the bigger picture? So if there was a way we can make sure that we have access for our appointees, you know, to train either the city has, you know, I know it'd be cost prohibitive to send them to, you know, like Board Basics 101 that the League of Oregon City puts on, but when I went to mine, actually Glenn Klein was the one who taught the class, and so now he's internal, so maybe we can put him to work doing that, I mean, it's just-
That's good to know.
It's just basic stuff, you know, that you learn as you go along, and so those are my two comments, I think that I, yeah.
Allen, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, we're, George, are the two vacancies vacancies, or are they people that are going off?
No, I think they're actually vacancies, and a couple of resignations.
Okay.
Due to health reasons, not, personal, not, not due to any conflicts.
Right, I remember that. Yeah, when's the next round for doing appointments?
June.
Yeah, June, okay. I was going to suggest if it was too far out, but do an interim one, but that seems appropriate to do then. The other comment I had relates to the work on the Sustainability Commission, and Sustainability Commission has reached out to the Plank Commission and also the Human Rights Commission, and done some branching and, out into those two areas as well, and one, with regard to the Human Rights Commission, one of the areas in particular is talking, trying to frame this issue of what does the- is talking, trying to frame this issue of what does the social equity part of the triple bottom line mean, and, because it's kind of the stepsister in the, of the three, and it always gets kind of short shrifted, and suffers from lack of clarity about what it means to take into consideration social equity when you're talking about a project, or a policy, or an ordinance. And one of the things that the Sustainability Commission is working on is trying to work with the Human Rights Commission on what those guidelines should be, and how that analysis should, what it should look like, and with more specifics.
There's a lot of people who want that information.
Yeah, it's a tough one, and it's actually the toughest of all of them by a long shot. The environment is easy, the economics is usually easy to figure out, but the social equity part's much more difficult. And so I think that's really good that the Sustainability Commission and the Human Rights Commission are working on that jointly.
Okay, thank you, George, very much, and thank you for serving.
It was my pleasure.
Next, we're going to talk about, did you want to say anything about Travel Lane County?
Sure, and I'll do the EMX.
Yes, yep, yep.
I mentioned this before, but it was brought up at our last Travel Lane County Board meeting, the possible state, the state legislature, they're going to attempt to introduce a bill on the transit room tax, and how the money is being divided out, and it's going to give complete control of the county, to the county commissioners of all the counties to decide how much money goes to who and to where. And the Travel Lane County is funded by those transit room tax, and as I said before, the amount of money that they receive to fund Travel Lane County, if it diminishes or goes away, we're going to see a greater loss to our community, the fact that Travel Lane County does such a wonderful job, you know, portraying and recruiting Lane County as a destination for people to come and visit and spend time here. So the amount of money coming into our community as a result of Travel Lane County's efforts is going to be a bigger loss than the money that would have gone from the transit room tax. So I plan on introducing it in the IGR Committee, that if this does come out, that we oppose it because of those reasons. And there's also a federal movement, and the Travel Lane County hasn't really come up with a position on that yet, but it has to do with the way room tax is collected on the internet bookings. You have these internet travel people such as, what are some of the other ones, Orbitz, et cetera, that will go out, and they will book a large block of rooms at a very discounted rate, and then they pay the transit room tax basically on what they lock these rooms off for, and then they actually book them to customers at a higher rate. And they're, and I'm not quite sure, maybe Brenda can help me out a little bit on this, but for some reason, there's a fee that these agencies are charging that are actually, should be going back to the different counties for their transit room tax. And Senator Wyden is the one that's introducing, that's going to introduce this bill, and it looks like right now that we, the Travel Lane County is going to oppose that one also, because that will also hurt the industries here, the hoteliers here in Lane County. Real quickly, shifting gears, but before I do that, Mike and I just noticed that the Budget Committee meeting set for the 26th is the same night as the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, so is there some way that we can maybe adjust our schedules on that? Because I know that, there's a number of us that were planning on attending that, the Awards Dinner. Okay, now shifting gears into the EMX Steering Committee, we met last week, and basically what that meeting was about was going over the final bits of information, and to come up with a recommendation to the LTD Board for a proposed route. You know, we started out with, I think, eighty-some, and kept narrowing it down, narrowing it down, and so the motion was put out at the Steering Committee meeting to accept the West 11th, West 13th route as the EMX Steering Committee's primary recommendation to the LTD Board. My feeling was that if I was being put in a position where I was making a recommendation of all the proposed routes that they had, that that, to me, appeared to be the best. However, I felt that I couldn't, without meeting with the council first and getting some direction, that I couldn't let, couldn't vote for a motion going forward with just one recommendation, and that I asked that the no build as well as the TSM be included in that, which time I was informed that the no build is an automatic push, that it goes along with any recommendations, but I couldn't get the TSM added into it. So I ended up voting no on the motion. There were five that voted yes, four that abstained, and then my no vote. So, and that was just to move the recommendation to the LTD Board, that based on the information that we had, that that route was, appeared to be the best of all the proposed routes. Now, I'm not saying that that's what we're going to decide on, and as a council, I made that clear, that we haven't decided yet on that either. So we'll be discussing that in the future, and we, the council, will be making our recommendation at some time. And one of those recommendations is the no build, as well as the proposed route.
Thanks, George. I just wanted to add to your previous conversation about Travel Lane County. I don't know whether they have ever even brought this up, but I do think it's of interest to them. As we talk about rail, and this whole notion of higher, more frequent, and so forth, I think with that comes a conversation about travel opportunities, like I said in the State of the City, between two states and two countries. And so having us think about that, and think about how to, you know, in Washington State, this is actually kind of a state discussion, but we have our piece of it, but in Washington State, they have been actively recruiting visitors from Japan who already know how to use the rail quite effectively, and it's a real boost to their economy, so I just think it might be worth the conversation of Travel Lane County to think about how they, as we get more engaged as a state in this discussion of rail, how we take advantage of it economically for our area and region.
I will be sure to bring that up at either the next Executive Committee meeting and/or the next Board meeting, just to kind of cast it out there, and perhaps put them on notice that you may be looking for volunteers.
Yeah, thank you. Alan?
So George, I wasn't, so you voted no because you didn't get the TM?
TSM.
TSM in there?
Yes.
You wanted that as an option to go forward as well?
Right.
But it sounded like you-
But you thought that the West 11th, 13th was the right?
Of the proposed routes that they had given us, and I think it was narrowed down to maybe a dozen at this time, I can't keep them all straight, what I said was, of these routes that you have worked up here, this one appears to be the best of all those. However, I didn't say I want this one as our route, I just said this appears to be the best one, but I also want to leave the door open to consider the no build and the TSM.
Yeah, my understanding is that, just to reiterate, that the no build isn't automatic forward. Whatever option you do, you automatically have the no build as an option.
Right, but when we were discussing the motion, that was not, that was not, information was not given to us until after I made the comment about that.
Yeah, I didn't know that until about a week ago either. I didn't know that that is an automatic forwarding of that option.
And I made it clear to the EMX Steering Committee that the Eugene City Council is far from making a final decision on where we're going to go with the EMX.
So with that split vote, did they make a recommendation?
The motion passed.
Were they making a recommendation to the City Council?
The motion passed to move it, to recommend it to the LTD Board.
Okay.
It's a whole nother group that's the, the leadership group that is looking at it.
The gel pack, or the-
Yeah, 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 and eventually bring a recommendation back to.
Council.
Uh-huh. Okay, so, any other, any other comments about MX or Travel Lane County? The next thing is the Human Services Commission, and Jennifer's the one who was representing us on that, and me. Andrew is going to be taking that one on, and the quick thing I can say about that is, I think you've probably heard it and seen it in the paper and all of that, is that the, there's a lot less money. And they had a mandated program evaluation process for allocation of funds they had, so they have less funds to allocate, and a way to go through that, they had six committees with four members on each committee, points were given for those programs that were sent in their RFPs, and points were given for capacity and need, and program design, and program impact, and linkages, and access, and budget, and finance capability, and they added that all up in each of those groups and made recommendations for what the top funding options, funding recommendations would be. Those, the way that works is, that doesn't go back to the Human Services Commission, that goes directly then on to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners met on it, had some expression of concern by some of those who weren't getting funded, so they punted it back to the, these committees, and so it'll come back to be looked at again. I don't know if anybody will change their mind, but that's the way it works.
So, my understanding, I attended that hearing, and it was my understanding from the outcome of that meeting, that only one of them actually was punted back.
That's a human, I think that's right, Andrea, and that would be Centro Latino Americana who didn't get, didn't get funded. And as I understand it, they could, I suppose, look at the points again and come up with a different recommendation, but if they come up with a different recommendation, it means one that they've already okayed would lose, in order to replace, to be replaced by Centro, that's how that would work. And the second thing that could happen is if they chose to keep it the same, it doesn't mean that the, a special needs of Centro wouldn't come back to the Human Services Commission to be, for them to try to address it in another way, so.
But there's no money anywhere, so, okay.
That will be on your-
On my watch.
On your plate, yes?
Probably goes without saying, but it was the previous Board of County Commissioners that made the original determination, and it'll come back-
And the previous council member and the previous-
Any, the relook will come back to a differently constructed Board of County-
But it will, oh, that's true, that's true. So that's my report.
Right now, it's back?
Mm-hmm. It's coming back to the Human Services Commission, and back to the panels again, and then it'll, if they, they will either change it, or reaffirm what they have already done, in which case it'll go back to the Board of County Commissioners, the new Board of County Commissioners, and we'll see what happens, so.
When's the final determination going to be?
I-
For the next budget cycle, starting July 1?
But I will point to you, in terms of your business, I would say that that loss in funding, and the holes, you saw Shelter Care talking about losing, what is it, 300,000 in their program, I mean, those big holes in the human service things are not going to go away, they're, you're going to see them resurface as you go into your budget discussions, when people come in and try to see if there's any way they can rest any, fill any of those holes through the city. So that will be your, the challenge that comes on our, on our plate. Next is no report on ElCog. Alan, you want to talk about MPC?
MPC, I'm the outgoing chair, yay, and Hillary Wiley is the incoming chair. We'll have a transition meeting with staff, so she can hit the ground running at the next meeting, which is next week, actually. The big issues there, of course, are relating directly to the transportation plan, trans plan, that's as well, so there's, at the local level, there's a trans plan, our trans plan, Springfield has one, City of Coville has one, and LTD actually has one, but it's not called trans plan, it's called their master plan, I think. And so all these local plans then are in process right now, so we're walking our way through these plans that talk about the needs and the infrastructure and of the local jurisdictions. Those then go through a smushing process, which is a technical term, that then get pushed together into the one that the federal government requires, which is the RTP, which is the Regional Transportation Plan. And so all those combined into the regional one, which then gets approved by the MPC. The trans plan is actually here at the council, and that, that's what, we've started that process, and we're working on that, and that's what's coming down the pike for all of us, especially with regard to ped and bike, and then, of course, the roads and other infrastructure like that.
Question? Yeah, how will the creation of the act change the work of MPC on transportation in general?
Yeah, the act has a very narrow scope.
For state.
And it really relates to the MTIP projects, MTIP, is that right? Yeah, the MTIP project, which is the funding from the state level at a regional level. So, and the act, we're the final area to not get an act, and how it works in other jurisdictions is that the area committees on transportation have their recommendations that they make towards the development of what projects get in and out of the MTIP, the funding from the state level. That funding keeps declining over time, too, which is a big problem, because a lot of it has to do with gas taxes, and the gas taxes has been declining as we get more efficient cars and people drive less, the gas tax has been just plummeting. So their, the act is really just focusing in on that as their main focus and their duties.
I guess I'm asking, what will be the interaction then, from the standpoint of, if the policy questions are handled at MPC, how will then the choice questions be handled at ACT? I mean, will they be, I don't know how you ask that properly, will they be subservient, I guess, to the choices of MPC?
I'm sure Brendan might have some comment. Do you want to say anything about that?
It's not the right word to use, subservient.
Coming up in our next agenda item, but you can get a moving forward discussion on that right now.
Yeah, you're Mr. Sequay, should have done this one last.
Sure, Brendan Wilson, for the record. Mayor Piercy, Councilor Clark, they need to work in conjunction with each other, and there are several ways they can do that. So the bylaws recommend that for the city and county representatives, that if they have a representative on the MPC, that they consider choosing that as their primary representative to the act. That way, there is some interconnection about what is going on. And one thing to remember that's important, and one of the reasons that we now have an act, is because the MPC is much smaller in area and jurisdiction than the act. The act covers the entire county, whereas the MPC, you know, just covers the metro area. The act also is limited, as Councilor Zelenka said, to the scope in which they weigh in. So they weigh in not only on the MTIP, but they also weigh in on Connect Oregon. And a good example of how that interconnection needs to work is that the MPC made recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on a prioritization of Connect Oregon projects. The one that rose to the top is the one that the MPC could not consider because it was outside of the MPC jurisdictional area. And so those types of discussions will work better if the representatives that are on the MPC are also either the primary or the alternative representatives on the act, so that those discussions about regional and county-wide transportation projects and policies and plans can be had on the same page, rather than making those alternative, or in some cases contradicting, recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Does that answer your question?
It helps me understand the interaction a little bit better, and that's really kind of what I was hoping that we could talk about for a second.
Since that doesn't exist yet, or hasn't met yet, all that's, the details will be worked out later, kind of thing.
George, did you have something else you wanted to ask? Is that very much it?
As I understand it, it's not an issue of being subservient to one or the other, that they're both actually, can make recommendations back up through the system, is that true?
That's correct.
Independent recommendations. Independent recommendations.
Okay.
But in that the representative.
Two orders.
I beg pardon.
Go ahead, Chuck.
In that the representatives are recommended to be the same person, there's not much likelihood that there will be a difference of opinion between the two bodies.
Um, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Farr, while there may be a difference of opinion, and if you use Connect Oregon for that purpose, the MPC can make recommendations to the Act on the prioritization of Connect Oregon projects within the MPC jurisdictional area. The Act will take all of the, of the projects for Connect Oregon from the county. They will, they are responsible for prioritizing Connect Oregon projects, and they will make that recommendation for us to the region, too, which then makes the recommendation to the OTC. So the MPC still can input in the Connect Oregon process, but it's the Act that's, that has the jurisdiction over creating that priority list. The MTP is the same way. Now, it doesn't work the other way, where the Act has the jurisdiction to make recommendations on the TSP. But they, they are a body that can, I would imagine, can show up at the MPC and provide comment. But there are different areas where they have either statutory, federal or state jurisdictional responsibilities.
And if the, if the members of the MPC are on the Act, it's a super, much bigger body than that, since there's a whole bunch of other people on there as well that could create the dissonance between the recommendations.
Thank you.
And help to make sure that everyone knows what's going on in the other group.
Sure. The, and I guess the, the item of clarity to me is that the, the MPC has a slightly weighted voice then on the Act, in that they deliberate separately and come with perhaps a little bit more background in their, in their recommendations.
Well, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Farr, that, that may be the case. I wouldn't say it's weighted. The, the fact LC made very certain that everyone had an equal voice at the table where the Act was concerned.
Thank you.
The difference, though, between those two bodies is that we still have a, sort of a final decision-making operation within the MPC that doesn't exist on the, on the Act.
Mayor Piercy, that's a very good point. The Acts in the state of Oregon are advisory committees that are set up at the beck and call of the OTC, and they're advisory only, whereas the MPC actually can make decisions that have impacts regionally.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on. We don't have anyone here from Public Safety Coordinating Committee tonight, although Andrea has said this evening that she will serve on the Public Safety Coordinating Committee. So thank you for that. And there is a written report that was brought for each of you, that's at your, at your table. So with that, we'll probably have just the right amount of time, and we'll do a little extra to let you have a couple of minutes with the rabbit, too, but we're going to do Sustainability Commission first, so.
I'll be brave. The Sustainability Commission had a conversation about what they wanted me to talk about in this forum. And we have one comment and three asks. The one comment is about the work that's going on between the Sustainability Commission and the Plan Commission, and that's the land use and transportation nexus stuff. And they wanted to make sure that the council took a long-term view with sustainability in mind when we talk about land use and transportation, and consider mitigating the negative impacts of those, that intersection between land use and, and transportation. And that the social equity part, going back to what I was talking about before, is really important there as well, and shouldn't be forgotten. So that needs to make sure that it gets kept in the consideration of those issues. The asks are about the, kind of their role. They're, they're the newest standing committee, and they're evolving. So they're, they are, I think, have done a good job of, of putting barriers around or markers around what their role is. But they feel like they can have a couple of different places where they can have some specific input to help the council. Again, you know, their role is to make recommendations back to the council. The first one is a role in Envision Eugene. And inside the Envision Eugene process, that there'll be triple bottom line analysis on some of these different options that will be going on. And they wanted to, to have kind of two things go on with that, the role of the Sustainability Commission with regard to that TBL analysis. One is to assist in the early framing of that TBL analysis when it goes on, so that it kind of at the front end, not, you know, be the end-all, be-all, end-all, but to assist in the framing of how that gets done. And then finally, before we see it on the February 28th, that the Sustainability Commission review those TBL results that come out of the staff analysis prior to the February 28th meeting and get those comments and review back to the council as, from the Sustainability Commission. So that was their first ask. And so I open the floor to a conversation about that. Any other, any.
The only question I have is, is how does, how does that differ from the current triple bottom line analysis that we are already employing? They want to look at that and see how it applies to this particular, to the Envision Eugene, and they want to, and they want to add something different to it? Is that what I?
No. What, my understanding is that we're doing the triple bottom line analysis.
That's right.
On these different things.
Yes.
And not that it's, it's a different perspective as opposed to a different set of rules or guidelines. It's just adding their perspective to it.
Okay.
Because they focus in on the sustainability stuff and the triple bottom line analysis. So it's assisting in the framing of that around each of these different projects within Envision Eugene. And then, once the, once the staff comes out with that, that they review it and add their comment to it before it comes to council.
So my only other question to you, Alan, and you would have a better sense of this, or you could talk about it with the Sustainability. My only question is, are they able to be facile enough to move fast enough on, if they want that opportunity? Can they meet often enough and be able to accomplish that in a timely enough manner?
Yeah. We had a conversation about that, because it, it will require moving fast and being kind of nimble on your feet. And while not, the entire commission will be able to, to do that and meet that schedule, there was a significant number of the group, majority, that committed to being able to do that within that timeframe.
Yeah. And I know our staff has already, I think, talked with at least the staff on the Sustainability Commission, Babe and all, and have been talking about some of these things and are planning on making sure the Sustainability Commission is a part of that review process.
Anybody else have anything they want to question or add?
And then the other one is the, in the, when there are, kind of on a broader scale, the same kind of topic, but on a broader scale, on an ongoing basis, that whenever we have significant, large, complex projects and/or policies or ordinances, that the, that the sustainability, and we apply the triple bottom line analysis to it, that the Sustainability Commission wanted to be in that loop so that they reviewed that and provided comment to the council, again, as part of their role, kind of formalize that before it came back to council. So there would be an added perspective from our, our commissioners on the Sustainability Commission on that triple bottom line analysis on any future significant, large, complex projects.
Sounds great.
Kind of the same thing, but ongoing. Because the first one is just on Envision Eugene.
I've, I've heard a good deal, I know that as the newest standing committee, there, as you've mentioned, they're still kind of working their way through their role and the work itself and how to best aid us. I've heard a lot in the work that they've done to, on the impact of the environment as, as one of the legs of the triple bottom line analysis. I have never heard, and have asked a couple of times when we've looked at climate action plans, some of the things we've discussed, to have a more robust analysis of economic impacts of some of the decisions that we've done. And I would, I would, I guess, say that I would really like to hear from them a little bit more, in frankly, a great deal more detail, the economic impacts of some of the decisions that they're, they're having discussions about. For example, and I just chose this because I saw someone in the audience over here, but are we doing a triple bottom line analysis on the, on the route choice for the West 11th MX?
The Sustainability Commission wouldn't. I don't know if staff is.
Eventually, I don't know how much you want to talk about MX, but between now and March, the initial decision, what George is talking about, we're not planning on doing a big analysis. As you move towards a final decision in August and September, the triple bottom line would be part of that analysis.
So we'll do a complete economic analysis of the impact of local businesses, as well as the impact to the LTD's ongoing operational budget, right? As a natural part of this.
Again, I think that's really good feedback back to the Commission, Sustainability Commission. They don't actually do the analysis. What they're proposing to do is review the analysis. So the analysis actually goes over there. And, and so the analysis is supposed to have an economic aspect to it, an environmental aspect to it, and a social equity aspect to it. And one of the things that the Commission can make sure that they look at is, were all three of them addressed adequately?
I mentioned economic impacts and the, that sort of thing. It's something I wanted more information about a couple of times and had several members of Sustainability Commission kind of privately say, hey, you know, keep up on that. Let's, let's make sure that, that we're doing that work. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Certainly from the staff's perspective as well, when we're talking about that particular issue, so.
I mean, I guess I would just add to that economic impact. That's a, and this is what actually the state wants us to be looking at in terms of transportation and land use, is the full-life economic impact, what you get and what you give, and, and all of those, all of those points. So that's.
Remember, it's in the context of sustainability.
Right.
Not in the context of global economy.
Right.
So it is a little bit different as we think about that, but we can provide more information. So for example, what staff has done is, we've gone through a very extensive triple bottom line framework to include scores of questions to be thinking about as we go through that. And so part of that is the economic side of that also.
My understanding of this is to ask the question, is this economically sustainable? Is the essential question you're asking, right?
Is it economically sustainable? And I think it fits within the context of the other parts of the equation. So it's economically sustainable, but also how's that contribute to, from a social equity perspective? And that, we talk about family wage jobs, some of those kinds of things, too. And so I think it's.
Access.
It's all of those pieces that try to come together. So we'd be happy to sit down a little bit more and go through a little bit more details. To answer your question, yes, economics is an important part of that analysis, yes.
Okay.
And it's making sure that all three of them actually get addressed, which is the point of.
And family.
Triple bottom line. Because it, I mean, I think the triple bottom line analysis tool came out of just a focus on economics without an emphasis, looking at the other aspects, environmental and social equity. And so this tool tries to get you to look at all three of them in every decision that we make.
And we'll get better as we go, too. I mean, part of it is continually to get better at it.
And the final is real quick. They, they wanted to be able to, if they see in their work low-hanging fruit, for, for instance, very discreet, specific policies or ordinances that they think are, are low-hanging fruit, that they be able to bring those to the council and say, you guys should consider this because blah, blah, blah. Because most of our, our interactions with committees and commissions is to tell them to go look at something like car sharing. We directed the Sustainability Commission to go look at car sharing. They want to be able to say, in our work, we found X, Y, and Z as kind of low-hanging fruit that we want to bring in front of the council as well. So kind of a proactive as opposed to reactive role.
A question, Council. The low-hanging fruit, is that identified solely by the commission members, or are they soliciting output, outside input on that?
Both.
Both.
And it gets vetted with staff and other folks to be able to make sure that they actually are low-hanging fruit. Right? And then one final comment is Babe O'Sullivan, the new Sustainability Manager, that was a very good hire. She's doing a very good job, and I think she's off and running, she hit the ground running, and she's done a good job of corralling the group and herding cats. And I just wanted to compliment her work so far.
So Andrea, really quickly.
Oh, I can't be quick.
Okay.
So it's okay.
Shall we do it another time then?
Yeah. We'll do it on my, on my rotation.
Okay. All right. So let, because we are now into the time that we need to hit the next item on our agenda. Thank you all very much. That was just the beginning of the kind of conversations we really do need to have on our various committees and commissions. We need to do, right now, an appointment of a representative to the Act that we just talked about. And briefly, Brenda can tell you what's recommended about that, what's required and what's recommended.
Thank you, Mayor Piercy. So Lane County now has our Act together, so to speak. The OTC approved the final bylaws on November 9th, and now we are in the process of actually forming the Act. So the, the final Act bylaws call for between 29 and 31 members. Those members of the original, it's, it's a big group, yes. It's countywide, and we're the, we're the size of, almost the size of Delaware, I guess. So we, the, Connecticut, yes. The cities and counties are in the process of choosing their, their primary representatives. Those primary representatives for those bodies that have elected officials, the primary representative must be an elected official. The alternative representative does not have to be an elected official. For those parties, as we discussed previously, that have representation on the MPC, it is recommended, but not required, that their primary representative also be their, one of the representatives that serves on the MPC, so that we have that cross discussion and information sharing between those two groups to coordinate them better. It's my understanding that tomorrow, the county will choose not only their county representative, but their Highway 126 representative. Once all of the cities and the counties and the other elected bodies choose their representatives, those people will come together and they will begin to choose the four designated stakeholder positions. Once those four designated stakeholder positions are chosen, that group will come together and choose the other stakeholder position. So right now, we're at the point where some appointment of the primary representative and the alternative representative. And the reason that this is important is because Act members, it was important to the Fact LC members, that there be a provision for making sure that people attended the meetings and that the voting structure of the votes for decision-making, if it came to a vote, it's supposed to be by consensus, was as broad as possible and as equal as possible. So it's important that the primary representative attend the meetings.
Mike?
There are two representatives on MPC and there is one on the Act. And at least my understanding of the primary discussion in the process was that it's one representative from each of the cities. And in the particular case of the Fact LC, it was essentially the mayors who were participating in that as the sole and chief representative for their city. So from my perspective, it only makes sense, then, that our mayor should be our representative on the Act. I, I would also say, and this is no reflection whatsoever on the superior and outstanding job that Brenda always, always does. But I, although the, although the guidelines don't require that the, the person who is a backup person be an elected representative, I'd feel better if it always were. As accountable to the taxpayers when we're talking about transportation projects.
Clearly from a staff perspective, I would concur with that. We don't have an interest in playing that role at all.
Okay.
And I think that's what most of the jurisdictions are doing, as a matter of fact.
Are you making a motion?
And the only thing that I would add to that is just whoever does that needs to really have the ability to, to attend those meetings. Because this is based on, this is really based on people being there, strongly. Yeah.
I have never seen a specific case in which, I guess, Betty, to answer your question, I guess I am making that motion.
Thank you.
If I can speak to it for a second, I've never seen a case yet where our representatives on MPC did something that I thought was, was objectionable to me as a council member beyond the pale, and they certainly have always made themselves available to talk about those things. I would, however, feel more comfortable if we had more. I would, however, feel more comfortable if we had more flavors of voice at the table, I suppose would be the best way to say it.
There'd be a lot of flavors.
But that's just a personal preference.
Are you making a motion?
I did.
Okay, and you say?
Mayor Piercy be our representative on the act.
I hear you say a motion.
Sorry, I'll be more formal about it, Betty. I move that Mayor Piercy be our formal representative on the act.
I second it.
Further conversation? All those in favor, please indicate.
Trying to get you some more time, Andrew.
Any in opposition? Okay, all right. Passes.
For a real wrap up here.
Oh, no. Don't want that.
Okay.
Oh, we need to do the alternate.
Oh, the alternate. You have an alternate you want to put out there?
I move that the alternative member be the other member of MPC at all times. At the moment, that's filled by Alan.
I second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. I think we got that one done. So now we're on to the work session item on the Eugene Water and Electric Board sale of water to Veneta, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll ask Brenda to just make a very quick introductory remarks. We really want to give this a chance. Could you ask questions or make comments?
All right, thank you, John, Mayor Piercy, members of the city council. As you know, we've had several discussions about the sale of surplus water to Veneta in October. The court ruled that EWEB, not the city, has the authority to enter into contract and sell surplus water to the city of Veneta. And you directed the city attorney's office to appeal that decision. In the meantime, the city of Veneta has asked that you consider a showing of support for the sale of surplus water to Veneta, so that they can move forward with the federal funding package that they have received and begin some of the initial work for that. A showing of support could be reflected in a resolution. Some of the city councils have indicated their desire to have the opportunity to discuss the possibility of that. After listening to your comments and discussing this with EWEB and the city of Veneta, a proposed resolution will be presented to you later on this month. That resolution will contain a specific amount of water that you would support. It would contain, could contain a provision that the resolution goes away should we not be successful in the appeal. It could contain a provision that should a regional water supplier come into existence and franchise fees are created in the sale of surplus water, that the city of Veneta would agree to also pay those franchise fees. And a provision that no one else can tap into that pipeline without your approval. And so with that, the city of Veneta is here to discuss the amount of water that would be necessary to allow them to move forward. Currently, the contract provides for 4 million gallons per day, which would meet their average daily demand at a 20-year buildout. But they would like to present to you some information that shows why perhaps a lesser amount would be appropriate and would still allow them to move forward and use their federal funding package. So Rick Hingham.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, no, we did have the opportunity to meet with city staff and with Glenn, who vacated his position. I think there were several issues brought up on what number, what would be that significant difference that we would recommend that the Eugene City Council put in a contract that's substantially differently than the EWEB. Kind of the number that was pegged was 3 million gallons a day. Our current contract has designed and the ability to go ahead and pull in 4 million gallons a day. And the graph that's going around is really just a reflection. And Brenda and I talked about this a little bit, hesitant to get a little bit on the technical side. But really, the bottom line is, is that we designed this for a kind of a 20-year horizon. We actually have a pipeline through booster pumps and whatnot that will allow us to probably draw water for 100 years. But really, we need to meet our 20, 30 flow and the number there is 4 million gallons a day. And so really, as we look out the next 20 years, we won't really need that full capacity of the 4 million gallons per day until that 20-year horizon is met.
So not until the 20?
2030. So the number that John and Glenn have proposed is the 3 million gallons per day. That's an acceptable number for us. Definitely meets our horizon out into the foreseeable future until the other issues are somewhat resolved and we can move forward.
Just quick, I'm just reading the graph real quick, but after about 2017, you do need more than 3 million.
Right. Yeah. Part of our agreement with EWEB is that we will maintain a redundant system, so we still have our own production capacity. So even at that time, we'll be producing an additional probably million gallons a day.
So to continue with the discussion, as you know, at the last work session that we held, Counselor Zelenka had some questions about the consistency of the surplus sale of water with our growth management policies and statewide planning goals. After discussing with staff and the city attorney's office, and then discussing it with Counselor Zelenka, we decided that the responses that we were coming up with weren't exactly addressing the questions that he had and the concerns that he had. So Counselor Zelenka drafted up his thoughts on a regional water master plan, which is contained as an attachment to your AIS. So I wanted to make sure and point that out.
George Polling?
Just real quick, referring back to the proposed resolution. I know in the previous conversations, there was, I think it was in the contract, there's a clause in there that states that if the water level drops to a certain point, that the city or EWEB has the right to not shut off, but regulate the flow of water to Veneta. So to ensure that the city of Eugene gets its proper amount in the event of a major drop in the water levels. Is that still in the contract?
Mayor Piercy, Counsel Polling, yes, it is. Yeah, I have a copy of the contract right here too.
And I'm not real sure of the wording on it, but that's basically what the idea was. If we could also get that into the resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Let me read you that language so that we're both, we make sure that we're talking about the same thing. It says... I just read it today, let's see.
It might help if I clarify the nature of the city council's action that we're talking about. The city would not have a contract with Veneta similar to EWEB's contract. Instead, what the council would be doing is authorizing EWEB to sell up to 3 million gallons a day. So all of the provisions that are currently in EWEB's contract, they all stay there. The difference is that EWEB would be limited to selling up to 3 million gallons a day rather than 4 million gallons a day, assuming that we win the case in the court of appeals. If we don't win the case in the court of appeals, then EWEB actually had the authority to do the 4 million. But what you would be doing is ensuring that even if we win the case and Veneta goes ahead with the pipeline, that, well, they know that they can go ahead with the pipeline. So the resolution can say, I mean, in essence, it says, the city council hereby authorizes EWEB to sell up to 3 million gallons a day. The contract that Veneta and EWEB have, it would just remain the same. Veneta would just be limited to the 3 million. And then we could have a separate contract, which would probably be a half a page, two pages long, that would have in it some of those other things that Brenda mentioned, like no connections to that pipeline outside of Veneta's UGB without the council's approval. Veneta would pay a franchise fee in the event that there's this regional provider and other people are paying franchise fees.
So what Brenda was bringing up were possible add-ons, so to speak? Is that?
Right. If you wanted to condition your approval of the 3 million gallons a day on some terms, that's what they would be. And so what Brenda was suggesting, or here's some things that you might want to think about.
But the clause that I'm talking about is part of the contract. I just wanted to make sure that that was in there so that the public knew that if, in the event of this major catastrophe, that this is what's going to happen. But if it's in the contract, then that's fine.
Yeah, it's there. There's nothing the council can do that can affect the contract that EWEB has with Veneta.
Right, thank you.
Mike? And then Pat?
Yeah, let's see how to frame this. Brenda, do you happen to know, I know that the, obviously, the flow of the Mackenzie changes throughout the course of a year depending on the season. What's the average daily flow of the Mackenzie? Do you know that offhand, or does anybody in staff know that?
Janine?
Maybe Janine back there telling me out, what's the average annual, what's the average daily flow of the Mackenzie?
They don't have it right now, I don't.
Nobody does?
No.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is because it seems to me that the purpose for us doing this is to perfect more water rights for Eugene, as I understand it, and to help our neighbor who is in need of a solution for their own long-term self-determination. And so the question is really whether or not, I mean, from the political question, I suppose, is it a good idea to do that or not do that? That's the political question. But if we get past that and we decide that it is a good idea, for me, the question is, why is it a good thing to limit the amount of water that we would sell them? And what I mean by that is, if the capacity of the river is very large, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, Janine?
Oh, I was just remembering that we did some statistics and on an August day, which is our highest usage, we take about 3.5% of the flow at the Hayden Bridge intake, 3.5%. And adding Veneta to that flow is .02% more.
So, yeah, we're talking about our usage at its highest point being a single-digit fraction of the resource itself.
Drop in the bucket.
A drop in the bucket. Thank you very much. And this adding only the most minor minute percentage, percentage of a percentage point to that. So again, my question is, why, if we've already set this up, why wouldn't we want to sell more water to Veneta if we've already decided we're going to do it, that we'd get past that point? Why wouldn't it be in our interest to sell as much water as they could possibly use because of the fact that we perfect more water rights? And as long as we're doing it anyway, we would get more money from the city of Veneta, thereby defraying the cost to ratepayers at EWEB? Why wouldn't we want to sell them 5 million gallons a day?
I think she can tell you what you want to. It's an opinion.
Well, I'm asking a very serious question. Is there a reason why, is there a reason other than political reason why we wouldn't want to do that?
Well, the one reason, the simplest response, Counselor Clark, is that it, on advice from our city attorney, it shouldn't be 4 million gallons a day. We know why. Whether it should be more, the use of water, and this is a very, just a very brief general response, in order to perfect water, if we were going to sell them as much water as we possibly could in order to get close to that 25%, you have to show beneficial use of the water. The city of Veneta has a projected use summary, which shows that they need X amount of water. Selling them more water than what they can use really wouldn't help us perfect our water, right? Because we wouldn't be putting it to beneficial use. So the amount of water has to be a real amount of water. And it can't be 4 million gallons a day. It could be more if they could show that they have a real need for that and they have a real need for that now in order to move forward with their federal funding package. There are political questions that I'm sorry, I can't.
But aside from the political question, it seems though that legal questions, they have to be able to show a beneficial use of that actual amount at that time. Do I have that right?
That's correct. The other legal reason to do, and it doesn't have to be 3 million, but that we don't want to be 4 million and we don't want to be 3.99 million, is because there needs to be a real dispute between what the council's doing, what EWEB's authorized, in order to keep the litigation alive. Once the litigation is over, if it turns out that the council does have that authority, there's nothing to preclude the council that's in effect at that time.
Changing it at some time.
To up that to 4 million. It wouldn't necessarily be all of you, it would be whoever's in office at that time. But the council could certainly raise it at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Pat?
Thank you. Just a question. I've been following this process for a number of months, but I've not seen all of the paperwork that the council has seen. And you mentioned that Counselor Zelenka has prepared an addendum to the AIS. And has the council seen?
Yes.
It is attached to the?
Mayor Piercy, Counsel Farah, it is Counselor Zelenka's thoughts on a regional water master plan and how that discussion would move forward and what it might look like.
Thank you.
Is that it, Pat?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So Alan that's in the queue and George Brown's in the queue. And I just wanted to jump in here and say a couple things. We've heard from a lot of people in support of Veneta getting this water. We've heard from a few in opposition. Veneta's position is clear and EWEB's position is clear. The quandary, as I've kind of, in my notes here, is around the precedent being set for infrastructure expansion and growth and its overall impact in doing this without a broader discussion on regional water needs. That's kind of what Alan brought up, the master plan, is like you open the door and say yes to this, there's no, without a plan, and you'll have the next ask and the next ask, and it needs that kind of broader discussion. It would seem, in the best of times, like the discussion should come first. I just don't know how to do that in this situation. Veneta has a grant and a timeline. And I understand there's also concerns about water rights that McDougal, Deemer have on asking for access to 22 million in water rights right now. So that that's part of the discussion that's out there. Also seems to be an opportune time to me, I've been thinking about this, I just don't know what your interest is, but you've got two entities that you are community partners that were in conversation with this. And the question is, you've heard some possibilities for things that we could kind of put in an agreement, but there might be others. Are there conservation agreements that we want to at least stimulate the conversation around with EWEB? Are there, and I'm not saying put rules in, I'm just saying, are there things that we want to have a conversation about? Like, for instance, it would seem, Veneta right now, is a prime time to talk to them about when they have a building that happens in the future, will they have a water reuse plan in place? So they're making the best conservation of the water they have. My only question to you as a council is, are we being sure? One question is, is there any way to do this where we actually look at the whole water question? If you don't want to do that and you want to move ahead on this, are there things that you want to get in the process, such as asking Veneta and EWEB, did you have a conversation about a reuse of water plan to really conserve water as they make use of this new supply? So it's just those kinds of questions I want to put out in front of you. Alan?
Yeah, exactly. Those are kind of the thoughts that were going around in my head as well. Before I get into that, I had a legal question. So I understand why our resolution wouldn't say $4 million, because that would make our appeal moot.
4 million water.
I mean, 4 million gallons a day. How do you draw that line? How'd you come to that conclusion? I mean, it seems arbitrary. And if I were a judge, I'd be looking at this with a pretty good eye of skepticism. And I'm wondering if this doesn't endanger our lawsuit by having a resolution.
There needs to be a significant difference between what EWEB has authorized and what the council would be authorizing. So 3.9999 million, I think the court would say, no, the lawsuit's really moot. 3 million is a sufficiently big difference to say, no, there's something real that's at stake, because Veneta needs that addition. something real that's at stake, because Veneta needs that additional million. This was based on not only my best guess, but actually Jerry Lids, and I said, Jerry, you're the former solicitor, you tell me what you think the Court of Appeals would, whether they would find this a problem or not. And it was Jerry's judgment that 3 million gallons a day would keep the lawsuit alive without any problem.
So, I did ask for, how does this relate to our growth management policies, specifically, and the state land use laws, planning goals, planning laws, and how those relate. This isn't really about Veneta for me at all. And they have their own UGB, and they're responsible for growth within their UGB and their planning efforts and all of that. This is really about what's our role as a, as a regional provider of water from the city of Eugene's perspective, and how it relates to our growth management policies and the statewide planning goals. And after talking to Brenda about this, they're really about, the planning rules and the state laws are about within our UGB, and talking about the things in the rural areas that aren't in our UGB. Well, that's the area between Eugene and Veneta, but not Veneta. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect that these don't really apply in this case, because this doesn't really come up. It doesn't come in Portland, because everything's contiguous. There is no difference between the areas. So, to me, it's really about the spirit of these policies and the laws as opposed to the letter of the rule. So, it became evident to me that in the context of this and what the mayor was saying, that to perfect our water rights, we can't just have one Veneta, that doesn't get us there. We need multiple Venetas deals in order to perfect the water right, to get to that 25 percent, to then secure the right to, to then go after the next 25 percent. So, in order to do that, it became evident to me that there needed to be some kind of planning context about this, because once, if there's going to be multiple asks about this, what's the context in which we're doing this, from EWEB's perspective and our perspective? I had a good, long meeting with Roger Gray about this, and Brenda, and Janine about this, and talked about this context of, the planning context. And, you know, they've been doing water planning for a long time, but it's not in this kind of context. It's not about a regional master plan. And so, there's a whole bunch of issues here, and there's a whole bunch of benefits to be had as well. SUB has to do some things, and if we cooperate, we could save money together, and all of these different kinds of impacts could be mitigated, and environmental impacts, social equity impacts.
Another round?
Yes.
So, I'll be back to you after we listen to George Brown, and Mike, and then we'll be back to you.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a few questions here. But first, I'd want to answer something, or just add something to what you had asked, Mike, about drawing water out of the river. Certain, there's a certain percentage, I don't know what it is, there's a certain percent of the flow consists of in-stream rights, cannot, can never be, you know, withdrawn, and there's a certain minimum flow, and, you know, protect the fish and everything else. So, I used to know what that was, but I forgot. Anyway, I'll go to my questions. I just kind of like to make a, I guess my first question is, how long has the state given us to perfect our third water right?
3.76 years.
Mayor Piercey, Councilor Brown, that has changed in recent history. There was a court case that came out that said municipalities have five years in which to protect their municipal water rights. We all know that it's difficult to plan growth for that short a period of time. It also takes a long time to get a water right permit, and then to perfect that. Those, there were some laws that were adopted by the legislature in recent years that are trying to modify that. That is one of the top three legislative priorities for the League of Oregon Cities, to clarify and protect the amount of time that municipalities have in which to perfect their water rights. So, in, long story short, Councilor Brown, we're not exactly sure, but we know it needs to be soon. And EWEB has asked for an extension in which to provide information that shows that they are moving towards that first 25 percent. We're not exactly sure when the state is going to say, yes, you're granted the extension, or how they're going to, and when they're going to come up with a decision that municipalities have run out of extension time.
Okay. Well, you know, even if we do the Veneta deal, that, we won't even be close to 25 percent of the first 25 percent. We have to perfect 25 percent of that third water right, to keep it. But this deal won't even be 25 percent of what we need to do. So, depending on the timeframe, we've got to run out and find a whole bunch of other customers. And I don't think they're out there. I think what happened in 1961, when we applied for this water right, is Eugene was growing at a pretty big rate then. I mean, it was high. It was a high rate. There was a big growth spurt there. I came across some kind of wishful thinking, planning documents from the Urban Renewal Agency when I was doing all my research a year and a half ago. And in 1968, the Urban Renewal Agency said our population would be like San Francisco's in just a few short years. And so, I think that was the mentality. I think they said, wow, let's go for, let's go for the water. Do you know how long it would, EWEB's projection is to fully perfect the third water right?
Well...
All four quarters of it.
Mayor Piercey, Councilor Brown, we know it won't be in five years, and we know it probably won't be in 20. We just have to meet the first 25 percent. But as Roger has been talking with different city councilors, and with John, and myself, it's beneficial use isn't just the use of water. And so, Roger has some thoughts about not only perfecting the water right, but mitigating our risk. We have a single source of water out of the Mackenzie. If we had a significant emergency event, like an earthquake, which everyone keeps telling us is coming, we could lose water, not just for days, we could lose water for weeks. Part of the plan, and part of the hope, to submit to the state of Oregon for perfecting the water right, is to show that we have come up with a plan to mitigate that risk, to move forward, towards the 25 percent by showing that we are using part of that water right as a backup. And he's been discussing that plan, and he can discuss it further, and we can discuss that as part of the regional water master planning, if that discussion moves forward. So, it's not just about pulling the water out of the river and using it in the city of Eugene. It can also be used to show as a backup, not only for us, but for other entities that might exist as well. And part of their hope is that that will, they could show that as beneficial use and help perfect part of that 25 percent. So, the number of years that it would take is a little difficult, because we're not necessarily talking about pumping it out and actually using it.
Well, that's what, that's what it's for, is to pump out the use. And my guess is, it would take us over 100 years to fully perfect that third water right. That's my guess. I don't know what, there's a chart here, EWEB provided us with a chart, and I think that shows it's like around 100 years. I think, I think the water right's too big, really. And I think it's putting, adding this false sense of pressure to our discussions about this. And it's making us mix all kinds of different things together, and it makes it tough to sort out. For instance, you know, I mean, the contract says that Veneta's only going to use this inside their UGB. But if both parties agree, can't you, you can change a contract anytime. You can add, you know, you can increase the amount of water that you supply. You can, Veneta City Council at any time can increase their UGB without our, you know, they don't have to consult us, or EWEB, or anybody else. They can just go, hey, let's double their UGB. So, I, you know, also, well, I'm running out of time. I'll need another round.
Well, I want to say that it's 10 minutes after now. I've got three, now four people in the queue. We probably should try to give us at least a five minutes between the time we leave here and getting over to the other.
We should.
So, I'm going to aim for trying to wrap this up in the next 10 minutes, and just everybody bear that in mind. Okay? Mike, you're next.
Yeah. I had not heard the part about the, the backup plan, I guess, for lack of a better way to describe it, as the, some manner of storage for a second source opportunity. I think that's terribly wise, based on what I've heard about us being entirely dependent on this source of water. But I guess, I have to admit, Alan, I haven't read your addendum B on your ideas about master, water master planning regionally. Although, I guess I would say, having not read it, that the first thing that occurs to me is that I would hope that anything that we did in that regard would not be filtered strictly through the value system expressed in our growth management plan. But a real, true, well-done, regional water master plan would include the voices from all around our region in the process. And the reason that's important to me is because I think, at the end of the day, we're not the ultimate arbiters of a lot of this, this discussion. I would think the state legislature and other state bodies are going to have some say on some of these questions. And I would, I would hate to see us get into a position where we thought ourselves the arbiter of what other communities could or couldn't do, or how they could or could not grow. As I think one could make a reasonable case, that we were saddled with House Bill 3337, in part, perhaps, because of how we dealt with our neighbor Springfield over time, in a way that they found didn't, didn't match up with what their hopes and what they wanted to do were. And so, they sought a different remedy from a different authority. And so, I would hate to see us kind of travel down that road again, and without a really well-represented regional body of people involved in such planning. I guess that's what would be important to me about that.
I'm going to move Betty up the queue, because she hasn't tapped her first ring.
And also, I'm very fast. But first, Alan's plan is on page 19, and I think it would take some time. But it disturbs me that we keep confusing this with a second source of water. That's another topic. And I think that's the one we should be concentrating on. And we should be talking to Springfield about that, about sharing sources of water. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got Alan, Pat, and George, and I've got six minutes. Alan?
So, I do believe it's important that we perfect our water rights, in particular, the first 25 percent, and that gives us a reservation on the next 25 percent. The reason I was talking about regional master plan, water master plan, is because it needs some kind of planning context to answer the questions that we have in front of us. But it also creates benefits for this cooperation regionally. But it also addresses a lot of the risks and the infrastructure cost issues that we have, that we haven't got a very good handle on. And as the mayor said, you know, you did the discussion, the planning first, and then you do the contracts, but that's not going to happen here. So, the, if you look at attachment B, about three quarters of the way down the first page, says the first step of the process would be an upfront scoping meeting to develop the scope of the, of work, and all the parties, the regional parties, would participate. And we would discuss the issues that need to be addressed, and how we'd go about doing that scope of work that would come out of that regional cooperative group. And the model for proceeding, in my mind, would be like the West Eugene Collaborative. And it would be a regional planning effort. I think it needs to be controlled and paid for by somebody. So, that's the logical participants of that are Eugene and the city, and EWEB, in my mind, potentially SUB as well, and the city of Springfield. But, but the, I think it needs to be a larger group as well, and I put that in there. I think that's exactly, you can't have it be another 2050 process where, or a Eugene-led only process, because that doesn't work. So, those two kinds of the bookends, and I'm talking about something kind of in the middle. So, the commitment that I need to have is that, that we are going to have that conversation, and that we have a commitment to, to do this regional water master planning process before I can support the resolution that's going to come before us. Because of, I think there's so much to be had in terms of benefits here. There's so much to be had in terms of good planning context, and there's so much to be had in limiting our risks, and there's so much to be had in further developing our water rights, that a good planning context and a cooperation between us and EWEB and the rest of the region is a very good thing that we need to do, and we should have probably already done it, but we're not there yet. We weren't there, so now we need to, I think we need to move there. So, I think EWEB's interested in moving that way, and I hope we are too.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Wilson, you'd mentioned that a part of the plan is that no additional water would be taken from the line between its source and Veneta. So, therefore, not diverting any water that's committed to Veneta from the existing plan. Is that, is that correct?
Mayor Piercey, Councilor Farr, the contract's very specific that Veneta can't sell the surplus water that they're receiving, that the pipeline cannot be tapped into. So, Junction City couldn't tap into the pipeline. The resolution would just provide a little bit of additional assurances that the city council would get to weigh in, should that happen. As Glenn said, the contract is sort of brought along with the resolution, and those provisions that are in the contract are still in play. They are still in existence and enforceable. And to address Mayor Piercey's concerns about conservation, there's a page and a half of conservation requirements in the contract, including water reuse and recycling.
Then my next question is for you, Councilor Zelenka. The fact that you'd mentioned that your concern, I assume regarding Goal Five, is the selling of water other than to Veneta, other than to the prescribed use in Veneta, does the clause that doesn't allow water being tapped out of the line, does that cover your concerns regarding our role in growth management?
And the way that the current contract, I believe, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, it allows the EWEB board to decide whether or not that can be tapped into. And only the EWEB board. That would be a concern to me.
Thank you. And I have read, I'll go on through attachment B, and it looks to be very well-written. Thank you.
George, then we're going to wrap it up.
Okay. I've just got a couple more questions, and maybe an observation. I, how long is the USDA's offer on the grant and loan to Veneta for, bid for? When's the deadline?
When's the deadline for use?
2015.
When's the absolute, when's the, like, the last date where we have to come to an agreement, and then Veneta gets to tell the US Department of Agriculture, they said it's okay, we can do that? Is it like a year, two years, two and a half years? There's personal time.
Councilor Brown, I can answer that. They are stimulus funds, and there is a kind of more of a perishable time period with those stimulus funds. So, we have to conclude our project and have drawn all the funds five years after the date of the award. So, the award was made in August of 2010, so we have until August, July, 2015, in which to complete the project.
Actually have it all built out. What's, how long would it take to build it?
Through the preliminary engineering work, it's a year of design and engineering, and two years to, two and a half years to actually build it.
Okay. So, you got about a year. You wouldn't really have to come to a decision at the end of this month. Could be more time.
Just to comment on that, I mean, there are a couple of things. We're, first, looking at a better construction climate than we've seen for a number of years, so we actually think we can lower the cost of that project by building it in the next 12 to 18 months, as opposed to waiting three years and then releasing it and whatnot.
Sure. Right. Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. It is where I get construction.
Any money we save would be savings back to our utility payers.
Okay. All right. And I guess this is a question for Brenda. Has the state water board ever denied a city in Oregon's, the public water utility, a water right, if they really needed it? Have they, have they ever said, you guys, you really do need this 2 million gallons a day, but we're not going to let you draw it out?
Mayor Piercey, Councilor Brown, yes, more than once. And it's becoming more and more difficult for municipalities to perfect their long-held water right permits, because they were taken out with the intention that they would grow into that water right. And what the court has said is that because of the very limited supply of the resource, the perfection of water rights has to take place on a faster timetable, because there are so many other entities waiting in line for the water. So, right now, even with the Mackenzie, the likelihood that we could get back in line and apply for the same amount of water, even less, without any restrictions on that water, is highly unlikely. The Mackenzie is one of the only bodies of water left in the state that even has a large enough municipal water right. That's why we're seeing some things that are happening in the Portland area, where they're actually buying water from other entities, because there just isn't any water left. So, yes. There have also been municipalities that have lost water rights for failure to move forward with perfecting them. And, and I couldn't see the state stepping in and continue to allow exemption after exemption after exemption, when there was no movement forward in the perfection of that water right. It isn't, the water is held in trust by the state for the people of Oregon, and hoarding water is not allowed under prior appropriation laws. water is not allowed under prior appropriation laws of the West. It's just not.
Well, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, I think that our, I think we overshot on our third water right. I think we asked for too much, because it was kind of back in the 60s, when there was this boosterism even more rampant than it's ever been since then, probably. And we were thinking, well, we're going to be as big as San Francisco. Well, I hope that never happens, because I don't think that's why, much as I love San Francisco, I don't want to see us be as big as that town. I think a lot of people feel the same way. So, what I'm wondering is, what if we renegotiated with the state, and say like, cut that down to more realistic level? Then that takes the pressure off. Well, now we don't have to run around, see, because we basically, we have to run around and try to sell about 26 million gallons a day to different people, to perfect the first quarter of this third right. That's an awful lot of water, and most of the other towns don't need it. They don't need it right now, and they won't for many years, probably. So, and then if we make a mistake, and we give up too much, and then we find that we really do need it, say 75 or 100 years from now, I have a hard time believing the state would say, well geez, sorry, second biggest city in Oregon, you don't get that water. I think they would probably kick out some of the agriculturalists first. That's my guess.
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Brown, the law of prior appropriation wouldn't allow that.
You never know what the law will be 100 years from now.
Hasn't changed.
It was the same 150 years ago, it hasn't changed in 100.
That's why we're in this.
Thank you, everyone. I think we're going to have to close, so we have at least a six-minute gap between this and the next meeting. Thank you.
Change, we have this.